You know, we have our own website. We have ways to communicate, you know, out to those who have signed up, obviously, because we're mailing the utility bills out, that we obviously can put a pamphlet in, you know, an insert to kind of explain more of the options that are available before we made a switch to any which way that we were going to go to. So there's, it really comes down to, after you give the direction and the decision, then it would really become to how we communicated to the residents here to help them out the best that we possibly can.
Cassidy brought it up. Sorry. You go.
One concern that I'm thinking about is the uptick in users around the credit card, right? It's substantial. It's significant. I guess my concern is if there were, there was a change, would that deter people from paying in general? Just for us to think about, you know, and are there going to be a lot more late fees, things like that, for us to kind of grapple with?
No, Councilmember Wong, I think that's a very good question. Don't have definitive answers. I think there's a tendency of, I'll ask a question. When's the last time you've written a check? That's the only type. So I mean, I think we're seeing, there has been a huge shift, and, you know, it's either a debit card or a credit card that you're utilizing for your payments. That's what makes things, you know, tough to not, you know, that can still be an option. It would come down to the question, are we paying, continuing to pay for those fees, or are we passing those on to the residents? And that's really where the question comes down to. And I think the younger generations that are coming out, I think, have never written a check, and probably never will. So, you know, that option has to be there for them. And our, you know, population is getting younger here in the city of North St. Paul, so we have to be aware of that. As far as, would it increase, you know, delinquency? You know, we wouldn't know until we were there. So I really can't answer any of that question. You know, if there was a shift, you know, would it deter people from using their credit card if they have to pay? That probably would be more likely, especially something that you're paying on a monthly basis. That's where we definitely would want to have them move to setting up for an auto pay, where they wouldn't be charged something. But, yeah, it's hard to answer.
Yeah, I think, with my trajectory of thinking, I was kind of thinking, why are people using credit cards? Is it because they maybe don't even have enough in their bank? And then they're just kind of paying that until they can, you know, get their next paycheck, or what have you. So I'm just kind of wondering, what are some of those factors? Convenient, is it convenience? Is it just don't have the money right away? You know, just trying to think about all those different factors right now.
And I think that's fantastic. A thought that I had had is that, you know, maybe we put together a survey before we make a final decision on this, and try to get some resident input, and find out where they're at. And hopefully, we would get some responses to give us a little bit more indication. It doesn't necessarily prevent the city council from making a decision of passing on the fees to the residents or not, but it kind of, I think, at minimal, it would allow us an opportunity to how we would get communication out to them, to our residents, to make sure that they're, knowing all of the options for payment, and helping them to find the best one for themselves.
Do you happen to have the data? Is there a way we could get this broken down, residential versus commercial? I'd be curious to know the difference impact.
The impact as far as dollars and cents of the charges, or?
Well, 8.7 million that we collected, the utility bill, some of that was billed to, we'll say, like Newman's Bar, right?
Sure.
So how many of these were bills to businesses? So how much of the credit card fees come from businesses versus residential properties? That might be a way we might possibly think about drawing that division line.
Sure. We can see if we can get that information. I don't know how readily available it is, but definitely we'll try to get that. We have to remember that, you know, the total, you know, annual bill is close sort of $19 million to the utilities, so, you know, that eight is, you know, the fraction of it. But, yeah, we can see what we can break, get broken down for you.
We did go back on the website, and it only takes credit cards. So if we did any kind of change, bank routing, at least have another option as far as not cost.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
For that, then you're able to, because I probably would have set it up, because how many times did your credit card get compromised? And I gotta go to each one of these places and change my credit card. So if they do bank routing, I do bank routing, so I don't have to deal with it. So I think even no matter what we do, we should add bank routing onto our website, because that will take a lot of the credit card stuff off, too, besides.
Venmo? Is that a secure payment method? Venmo?
They take like about the same as, of course, the customer pays.
Do they charge?
Yeah, they do.
The customer?
With the customer, yeah.
Doesn't pay, though?
Right.
Just like we are charged with the credit card, yeah.
Correct.
As a vendor?
Two and a half percent on Venmo, too.
As a vendor, my significant father uses some of those services, and as a vendor, they get hit with a lot of charges, too. So I don't think those would be beneficial for the charges.
Maybe for either party, it sounds like.
My kids have no idea what a check is, but they all know Venmo.
Yeah, isn't it? Yeah.
So Mayor Mangan was right. And I pulled up my personal account, and it is only credit card. It's through my debit card, so we're already getting charged fees for that. But we had the option, doing an ACH, to see a lot more people pay their accounts versus what we're able to do right now.
Yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that changed. Other questions, thoughts?
For the other areas in which we pay, like utility and the park rental, those processing fees, when it comes out of those funds, is it taxing, or is it too much, or is it going over budget? Or how do you, how are you looking at that?
Well, no, they're not going over budget, because they're included in the budgets. So I think the park processing fees were about $6,800. That's coming out of general fund, which is a levy fund. The other processing fees are being paid by the electric fund. And the electric fund, at least from a fund balance standpoint, cash balance and fund balance standpoint, is doing very well. So it's not hurting. But then comes the argument that if you're not, if the city's not paying those fees, that's a reduction in expenditures on the electric side, gives the city council options to think about when it comes into the budget time, as far as either in times where energy charges are going up, it may be that we don't raise the electric rate as high, because we now have, you know, a savings from not paying the processing fees. And/or, we look at the potential of transferring funds from the electric fund and that amount to some other place that may have a need. The first need that comes to my mind is the roads and the streets, and how the city will afford to do that in the upcoming years and the years beyond that. So here's an opportunity to potentially transfer some funds to help out the roadways. And again, there's a part that we'll never know at this point in time, it's kind of like the question of, you know, would it increase delinquency? And that is, does a switch of having the credit card fees passed on to the resident switch how they're paying? If they go to an auto pay and an ACH, no problem. If it switches to being more in the mail, then that's more staff time, because they actually have to be processed and in their accounts and, yeah, and everything. So then someday, we may end up having a discussion on, you know, what's the impact to the staff, you know, piece to it. But, again, don't have any data to say, yeah, this is what's going to happen or not. Just to be aware of. Every decision we make always has pros and cons and ramifications, so.
Tim did bring up, or you brought up a good point when it came to using a check. I did use the check, because I had to go to the DMV to get the tabs for all of them. And I, when I was down there, I asked, and they said, they couldn't use state money to pay for a convenience fee. That's why they have to charge that outside of it. Is that, that you ever heard of that?
For the state?
Yeah, for any, because that's a convenience fee, and they can't use the tax dollars for it. That's the reason why they break it out? Because you have to pay that fee?
I've never, I've never heard that.
That's what I heard.
I definitely, definitely something.
I apologize. I'm slow on the intake tonight, but I went there. That's because I asked, I said, why do you get charged for credit card fees? Because I would think everybody would use a credit card. And the gentleman behind the counter says, with the state money paying in convenience fees, they can't do that. That's why they break it out.
Something I'll look, I'll look into, and see if there's a statute out there, if it's just, if it's just applicable to state agencies or locals. So we'll see. Yeah.
Where that is on there.
Nothing else has slowed you down from arguing with him.
That's right.
Yeah, I had to think about that one.
Halfway, too, for sure.
So, I'm, did I hear you say $19 million was basically our utilities, our utility bill for this income for the city?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I was just, one of the questions that I had was, what are these total, what are the total fees divided against the total income? And it's a little over a percent. But when I look at the raw dollars of 200 and whatever it was, work with me, I'm gonna say 210.
207, is that what?
We're gonna round up.
I'm good with 210.
That's 4% a levy. I mean, that's, it gets to be a big number when you look at it, when you start talking about it that way, when we're gonna start to get into those levy increase conversations here in about another six weeks.
I think before that, in six weeks.
That's where it jumped out at me. But I was just curious from an overall standpoint. A point's a point. Part of it's the cost of doing business, but when you look at it as what it would do to a potential levy increase or decrease.
So, Councilmember Cole, that's exactly where my mind goes, and that's part of our discussions that we had last budget process and going through the various workshops. And that is it. We've got, you know, every $70,000 is 1% in the levy increase now, from where our levy is at. So you're looking at 3%. Yeah, it's nothing to, you know, for me to say, hey, let's ignore it. That's why it's brought up in front of the city council. And there's mechanisms that would be able to allow us to, because the fund, because they're being paid from an enterprise fund today, to get it over to the general fund would have to require a transfer. We build transfers, you know, within our budget already. You know, we're transferring right now into the general fund, the amount of $820,000 that come from our various enterprise funds, HRA and the EDA. So can we do transfers? Absolutely. Do I think about that? Yeah, that's kind of why I brought this up and looked at it. And, but I can't make that final decision. I can just throw the ideas out there and see, you know, what the appetite is. But you're absolutely right. 3% is a lot of, a lot of increase. And that 3% means it hits each and every resident, residential, commercial, everybody, so.
That was great information. I was glad you brought it up, because it's definitely...
So I'm just gonna go through the three options real kind of quick, just for something to think about. And then I am gonna ask for a little bit of direction in which way we want to go. I've already got a couple of items that, that we'll, you know, get on, get on to, and I'll kind of summarize them at the, at the end. So option one would be that the city continues to pay all credit card costs. I've contacted two companies, and their processing fees were pretty much identical. So there's fees that the actual credit card companies charge that we have really no, we can't control. So if you're using a MasterCard or a Visa from this, they're gonna charge a fee. Then there's, in addition to that, there's a layer where the processing company will charge some sort of fee. The two companies that I contacted were pretty close to it, and had it estimated out to what it would be on an annual basis. And just making a change to either one of those two companies would save us about $31,000, just off the bat, just changing companies. Again, that's kind of, you know, the value of doing RFPs, of kind of checking, you know, the climate in different industries or services, or vendors that we're currently using, because many times you can get reduced costs. And option number two, the city could continue to pay all of the credit card costs, and then charge a percentage kind of as a fee to the customer. If we were to charge a 1% utilizing what the actual payments were on credit cards for 2022, in addition to that $31,000 savings, we would end up coming up with a total of $118,000 savings. If it was a 1.5%, it'd be 162. 2% would be 206. And then 2 and 1/4 would make us above the break-even point for both utilities and park funds, expenses on the credit cards. And then I just threw one in a little bit higher than that. But the one, 2.25 is in red, because it's really, you've hit your break-even point of what the costs have been. Part of the reason where, from what I've learned from, in discussions with some of these processing companies, is that if the city is the one to pay for the fees, we get a lower rate, because we have a better credit, than if we were just to pass them on. Then the fees can be a little bit higher. Neither one of them would really tell me what that difference would be, while they just said that, you know, it ends up being a little bit higher, because they're assuming a little bit more risk from, because it would be a direct obligation with the resident and the company versus North St. Paul and the company.
A note on that one, I do see that, choose about 3 and 1/4, when they kind of break out what the fee would be.
Yeah, yeah.
A savings of about a percent, it looks like.
Option two, continued, was just kind of showing what each one of those options would be as an impact to our residents who are paying by the credit card. So the average utility bill is about $222. And so 1% would be an increase of, you know, would be a charge of about $2.22, $3.33, $4.44, and a $5 if you were to hit the break-even point. And then option number three is just to shift all of the utility and the park, you know, charges over to the residents, and then we would have that annual saving of $178,000. So those are kind of just some thoughts of kind of options. But clearly, this is your decision, and just really kind of looking for direction from city council on what we'd like to do.
For option three, does that also include the RFP, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, we still have to do an RFP, and that's where the direction comes before putting an RFP. It's, do we, are we the ones who are going to be paying, or are we going to have the residents pay? But, yeah, there's, you know, because obviously, they still need to get that information integrated into our financial system, so, yeah. Questions? Thoughts? Direction?
Do you know, are we able to separate how we bill, commercial versus residential?
Yes. Yeah, we, yeah. It just, I don't know if it's an easy, if there's an easy report to know if, you know, that we can total up all of the commercial properties that paid via credit card versus residential being paid by credit card. That was the only part to it. I can tell you how much...
But hypothetically, could the city decide to say, we still pay all credit card fees for residential, but pass directly on, on all commercial?
Hmm. I don't see how that would, I don't, you know, anything probably is possible. I just don't see how that would be able to make that distinction from somebody who's paying. How would you verify that you're paying a commercial property versus a not? I don't know. That would be something that I would have to ask a credit card company, how they would be able to do that, if it was even possible, so.
I'd like to see the fee covered, as far as the 2.25, the one you had that was highlighted, that would take care of it. It's about a percent less than what it would be if they had to do it on their own, for what I've seen around, about the 3 and 1/4. So that's a discount with that. But I don't think we should, in my opinion, is not make money off of a credit card. Just try to, just try to be even, try to do them a favor. It's 1% less than doing that, but we can't be absorbing $172,000 a year either.
However, circling back, it should have the option on the website.
Oh, that's, that's pretty clear, and we're gonna be working on that start tomorrow morning. So we'll find out our options on to that, absolutely. I mean, yeah. No matter what the decision is, that message is loud and clear, and yes, it should have been. Although I was underneath the understanding that it was something that was easily, that it was out there, and, yeah. So I, yeah, yeah.
But perfect. I mean, that's, as long as we're not pulling the rug out from anybody.
Yeah.
You know, just understand and give another option. That's not the cost.
And again, if that is the direction that city council wants to go, to me, we advertise this before it actually gets implemented, too. And so it would be something that, you know, for three months, it would go in the inserts with the bills. It would be on our website that this is happening, making sure that we have all of our options, that they're easily understood, that there's some sort of way that, you know, if there's a, you know, how do you do it type of thing, questions and answers that are there. It's really, how do you make it as easy for the residents to make a transition? Other thoughts? I hear our mayor's looking at that 2.25% as an option of charging. Others at that point, or different, or?
I'm agreeing with Mayor Mangan. I mean, on most sites you see, too, it indicates will always, if you're using a credit card, you will be charged.
Yes.
This percentage.
Yeah.
We'll want to obviously make that clear.
Yeah.
No, I'm always happy to go, but let's...
Anybody else want?
There you go. That's why we, that's why I love her. She's our thought processor.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll go.
Thinking.
I think, as I said earlier, for starters, I was surprised that we even took credit card. I didn't know that was an option. I would have been getting my points for years. I firmly believe we need to have a no-charge process. And so, you know, that's why I asked. I've done the bank draft for as many years as I can remember. So as long as that option exists, when it comes to park rentals, I know one of the things that we do require is that the damage deposit be paid immediately. So that was why, you know, credit card has always been an option. I don't know if we offer a, what's the three letters you used?
ACH.
Yeah, that, an ACH for that. But I firmly believe we need to do something so that the residents, there isn't a fee there. But I also don't want to take away the flexibility of the credit card for those who need it, or may need it from time to time, or want their points. And I'm aligned with the other two. I like the percentage better than a flat fee, because then it, then everybody's treated, you know, equal, as opposed to a flat dollar amount. And as long as we're not necessarily making a profit off of the credit card fees, whatever it rolls to, is what, you know, if we get charged a little higher because of the decisions we made, those, you know, I'm aligned with passing those along.
I would agree with the percentage component, if that was the option between a flat fee and a percentage. I hesitate for it to be too high, right? Kind of, I would hate to deter people from paying their bills. And if it's a convenient thing, I think about this in like a behavioral economics way. Like, if that's easy for people to just do that, that's, that's great. If you take it away, if you put barriers in front of it, will they, again, not pay? So I really, it's just the highest use, so just being careful where that, that point is, which I don't know yet. Still thinking.
No, I think that, I think, Councilmember Wong, I think that's a very good point. And, you know, the component to it is, we don't know what, what impact this will have. You know, we don't know what impact, because we don't know what direction that residents would go into. Even if we make it much easier to do an ACH, do they go that option? Do they not? Does it create, you know, residents that get very angry with it? I have no idea. Does it increase our delinquency? I don't know. Those are things that we'll end up having to watch and track, and we do. We look at all of that stuff on a very continuous basis. So we're, I mean, that's all being tracked on a monthly basis, so we can definitely report back to city council what some of these results are, if we, if we see something that, you know, is drastically, you know, impacting what we believe is good customer service. And, you know, I think the option of a credit card, how whatever came to be here in the city, and the city picking up the fees to it, I definitely agree with, you know, offering an option, an option to be able to use your credit card or debit card. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's customer service. I mean, that's what you have to do in, in the industry today. Whether it was wise for us to always be paying or not, that's, you know, that's really the question that really comes to everybody today. Is there going to be some individuals that are going to be upset? Absolutely.
I'm wondering, too, there's a slide where you have all the different payment methods. I think it's slide, page 12 of 18, and it says, let's see, in 2017, we see kind of like a drastic increase of bank draft. Is that the, and you may not know, but, because this, I think, was before your time, but do you think that's when we started implementing bank draft?
It was in existence before that. There, I don't know the reason if that was a push, and there was some sort of advertisement to there. I definitely will find out why it's, you know, it jumped up from 2017 to 2018. But, because, yeah, that's, that's, you know, a very significant, you know, change that had occurred. So, yes, I will take a look at that.
Anything, you want us to have official recommendation going forward for you?
Um, I, I don't think I, I, you know, yeah, I think I have enough, yeah, I have enough information that, so what I'm hearing is that there's more of a consensus to, well, I think it's, well, with the exception of council member Norby who hasn't weighed in on this, I think there's definitely four members that are looking that there should be a charge back to the residents to offset the costs. Three of which are saying we should be at a break even point at that two point two five percent. One hasn't really made the determination of where that should be. So I think, you know, the majority is, is speaking to me and saying, yeah, we really need to, you know, pass on those, those fees to the residents. And we need to make sure that we have other options available for our residents and make sure that they're communicated and that they're easy to use. And so with that, what I'm going to do is to put together an RFP and get that on the street and bring the results back to city council for your final approval and blessing at that point in time. Unless there's a difference in, in thought or opinion.
If I could just request a little bit more information on.
Sure.
Delinquency piece of it, just because we've, I've brought it up, I would love to know how it correlates with some of these other data points that you have.
So you, you would like to know year by year the delinquency that, that we're having?
If it's available.
Sure. So what I'm hearing is that we're looking for some additional information on commercial and residential usage of credit card, if we can break, get that broken down. That we need to make sure that the ACH option is on the websites clearly identified and easy to use. Gonna do a little searching on Minnesota state statutes to find out if, if government funds.
That's true, yep.
Yeah, well, it, it, it will, it'll be one of those ironic things that maybe this isn't something the city should have been doing all along type of thing. And then this was easy to answer, so that's very good. And then to get an answer to why the bank draft jumped significantly from 2016 to 2017 and then delinquencies year by year, at least from 2016 moving forward, so. I'll have that done before we leave today. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah.
Don't do that, that's no problem.
I thank you very, very much and, and, and this, thank you.
Other business, anybody have any other business? If not, I'm just not gonna go by name, anybody? Okay, then I'll call for adjournment at six twenty-four. Anybody motioning?
So moved, Your Honor.
So move council member Wong.
Second.
Second council member Norby. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Adjourned at six twenty-four, if I have to tell the time.
It's good you can tell the time because Terry could.
See, I'm already one step ahead.
Yeah, but we got you digital clock.
Yeah, that's true.
Terry had an old, old school.
Yeah, the analog.